...
First up on the list is our invocation and pledge, and if our county administrator would lead us.
If we could, please, let's rise for a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
All right, first item is presentations, recognitions, and awards. Baco Achievement Award, Meadowbrook Library Summer Backpack Program. Katie Boyle.
Mr. Chair, very pleased to have Katie Boyle with us here this evening. Thank you for driving down, Katie.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Meadows, Mr. McMahon, good evening. My name is Katie Boyle. I'm the Director of Government Affairs with the Virginia Association of Counties, and I'm so pleased to be with you tonight to present you with a Baco Achievement Award. So for the benefit of your constituents who may not be familiar with Baco, we were founded in 1934 to serve and support county officials. We support counties through our advocacy efforts, our educational programs, and our member services. In 2003, we established our Achievement Award Program with a twofold purpose: to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services and to identify programs that could serve as models for other counties to emulate. And so today, I'm very excited to present Montgomery County with a 2020 Achievement Award for the Meadowbrook Public Library Summer Backpack Program. This is our 18th Annual Achievement Awards. It's the fifth win for Montgomery County. I would also note it's your third win in a row. Y'all are on a roll. Hope to come back here next year. We received 76 entries in 2020, and we selected only 21 winners from 14 counties. So that you can see, this is truly a competitive program. Just want to take a moment to thank our judges. We had Ted Homar, who's the retired Associate Director of the Virginia Institute of Government, Dr. Cheryl Bailey, who's visiting Professor of Practice at Virginia Tech, and also former Deputy County Administrator in Chesterfield County, and my former colleague Larry Land, who retired as Director of Policy Development at Baco. And they always do a great job, and I just want to thank them publicly for all the time that they've committed to this program. I think we would all agree, it's been a really challenging year, and so it's especially exciting to come out and celebrate the creative thinking of our member counties. And I just want to share something that Ted Homar had shared with us. He's served as a judge since the inception of this program. And he said, "I continue to be inspired by the good work done by Virginia's counties. Year after year, counties prove that the Achievement Awards are a treasure trove of ideas and innovation." And I just thought that was well said, and I wanted to convey that. So I'm extremely proud to present you with an Achievement Award for the Summer Backpack Program. Just reading up on it before I came down here, what a great way to use a community resource like the library to meet kids' needs and bring partners together. So, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you, I think some of the program staff are here to speak a little bit about it, and then at the appropriate time, I have a plaque to present to mark your achievement. So, thank you again.
My name is Cindy Minnick, and I'm the Branch Manager with the Meadowbrook Public Library. Mrs. Janet Rand, she's our Assistant Branch Manager. Mrs. Karine Khan, our Director. We've been doing the Backpack Program for five years in the eastern part of Montgomery County. And I have to say that when it first started, we knew that there was a gap that in the summer, that children were not being fed. And it was an opportunity, because there's no free lunches in the summer when school's out. So we decided that we would try this, and we had the support from the community. And I have to say, not because I work at Meadowbrook Public Library, Eastern Montgomery is so supportive of helping. And as most of you will know, we have the highest free lunches in Montgomery County. And so we started this, and the community came out and they helped. We have so many, the different people who helped us with this and the groups that, Mountain Valley Charitable Foundation, Shawsgaw Lay Ministerial, and other groups. And also, we had two wonderful people to help us with it. That was Ruth Heiselman, that would come and fill these bags, and also Angie Helms, who is with the Virginia Extension Office, would come and offer healthy snacks to the kids. So this happened every Tuesday, and each child would get a bag full of healthy food for them. And we also did crafts, horse-free books. And so then, at the end of the Backpack Program, we always would do free school supplies. And this year, we still did that. And we also, a couple of years ago, we added underwear and socks for the kids when they were going back to school, and that was sponsored by Laffette Methodist Church. And so it's wonderful. I've worked for the library for 35 years, and this is more, it's very rewarding. I love it when we can help the kids with the food. And then we can also say, hey, we've got the library here. We can, you know, we're here for you. And Eastern Montgomery is just wonderful to work with. And I have to say that we are very fortunate, and I'm very fortunate to have my coworker here. She always goes with me, and, you know, she's my right-hand person to help. And she'll, you know, it's very rewarding to have staff members that will say, look, we can do it, and then our director to support us with this. So, but this year, I wanted to tell you that we gave out 555 bags of food. The Panadol didn't stop us. We did curbside. And so it was very safe, but we were also able to give crafts, food, and healthy snack. And then we partnered with Feeding America to do grab-and-go snacks and grab-and-go meals. And so it was wonderful, and we're honored that we received this award. But like I said, we thank for, it's a community, our library is a community place for people to come. So, thank you so much.
Cap off.
Great job.
Thank you so much. And, Mr. Chairman, if I could shed the board's indulgence just for a minute. I have one more presentation to make this evening, if I could, to a very special member of your Board of Supervisors. I'd like to recognize Supervisor Mary Biggs for her completion of our Certified County Supervisors Program. I think it's a little testament to Supervisor Biggs's love of learning that despite serving on the board for many years, she undertook this training program to serve the community better. Just a word about the program. We offer it in partnership with Virginia Tech as an opportunity for county supervisors to learn how to more efficiently and effectively lead in their communities. And so it's a rigorous program, five courses, a mix of classroom discussion, after homework. It covers budgeting, leadership, governance, community planning, all sorts of important topics. And so we've had 73 supervisors complete the program since its inception. And we're very proud that Supervisor Biggs is joining their ranks. And so on behalf of Dean Lynch, our Executive Director, it's a privilege to present this certificate of completion to Supervisor Mary Biggs. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Be careful, Mary, that, I don't know if it's 50 pounds to weigh that.
I just have, can I make one comment?
Absolutely.
I think I was the oldest or the longest-serving supervisor that ever took these courses. And so I did write up a testimonial about why it's important to take the courses and how much I learned from the courses and all the networking. But I want to personally thank the staff here for helping me, especially in the planning and budget areas. I learned so much from the staff that you would have thought that I would have already known. And so I want to, I just want to shout out to the staff for all the help that you gave me.
Very good. All right, next on the list, Virginia Department of Transportation.
Believe us, Clark, in the back, there he is. Who is that mess?
Just for a minute.
Yeah. It's a whole lot easier to understand what you're saying.
It doesn't fog my glasses up either. Let me take it off. Good evening. A few updates on some of the maintenance items we've been working on. I'll talk about some construction, maybe a little bit about other stuff. We've been taking the opportunity of a lapse in the very, very severe weather we had earlier this summer to catch up on a lot of just the unpaved road, mowing, brush cutting, things like that. We did some ditch work on Cedar Run, work on Buckskin, work on Cedar Run, Huffville Road, ditches as well, some shoulder work on Cedar Run and Janelle. I'm not going to go through the list of the unpaved roads. There's lots of them. We tried to get to as many as we could. Did patch some of Van's Chapel and cleaned some pipe on Shelters Road, Meadow Creek. Finished up a lot of the mowing as well. Still have some primary mowing left to do, but all the secondary mowing is done. Couple of tree removal items that were a problem. One was McDowell Court, and another was in Deer Croft. That had been a work order for quite a while, and just got that last week or so. And then our maintenance crew spent a lot of time last month getting their equipment ready for winter weather. So we've already started looking forward to that. We do a winter conference in October. We'll do it virtually this year. Usually, we, you know, meet all of our supervisors and superintendents from all of the 12 counties in the Salem District get together in this one big room. And we have the, you know, the weather guy comes and talks to us, and we just sort of have kind of a great big district team meeting getting ready for winter weather. Not doing it the same way this year, but we are going to have a, you know, strategy kind of virtual meeting a little bit later on this month. Some of the construction items we're about ready to do. Fairview Church, where the place that low-water slab. It might have to wait until spring, as it turns out, because it will require Fairview Church to be closed for a while. But now we're up against the paving. So we could, we've got the environmental clearance, the design. We might just wait on it until spring, because if we get up to a point where the asphalt plants close, then we can't pave over top of it, and it's going to sit like that for the rest of the spring anyway, and we don't want that. But it's about ready to go, as is the low-water structure on Taylor Hall. We're close to, we've got the design, we've got it ready. We're using one hired contractor. He's also going to be working on Owners Run, which is a revenue-sharing project. The county puts half the money in for those revenue-sharing projects. So we'd like to get that finished. I think it's the last revenue-sharing project the county has. And it's going to be a little bit to get that done. So those are the three things we're working on with our hired equipment contractor. No updates, unfortunately, yet on the through truck or the speed limit on 114. Through trucks on Meadow Creek, I'll still keep up to them for some decisions on that. And your six-year plan project that's up next is Yellow Sulfur Road. We're having a few issues with that, to tell you the truth, on some right-of-way. That's holding us up right now. The rest is ready to go. But we've got a few property owners that we're negotiating with on some pretty tight spots. We really can't do it without getting a little bit of right-of-way from them, so we're going through that. That's it for my update. Any questions or requests for answers?
All right, well, we can go around the room, Supervisor Biggs. Would you like to start?
No questions, just so you keep working on that Price's Fork and 114.
That was a, that was a Smart Scout application. We're hoping to get some money for that.
Fingers crossed.
Yes.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have any questions, just to keep our brush cutting in mind when you get a chance.
Yeah, I have a list of where we did do some. We did Oilwell, went out Blue Springs, Den Hill, and did some Woodland Hills. That was brush, and those are probably request bus routes, things like that. What we're going to keep working on is-
Walnut Springs is awful, and I drop a school bus through there every day.
Walnut Springs?
Yeah. It's really bad.
Okay.
Supervisor Demonts?
I don't have any questions. Thanks for being here this evening.
Supervisor King?
Just a couple of things. I appreciate you keeping the voice in for Meadow Creek. And Mr. Poff on 764 Elliot Road. Could we send somebody down and look at his road? He said it's in really bad shape.
Okay, that's his address, 764?
Right.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bloodons?
No questions. Thank you for being here tonight, and just keep on following up the speed limits on Route 114. Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair Bone?
Thank you for taking care of the fallen tree on Harding Road around the curve a couple of weeks ago. Also excited about Taylor Hollow Road. Thank you. And the brush on my street, Woodland Hills. Thank you.
They did get that.
Yep. Thanks again.
Only thing I have for you, David, is some citizen requests for some potholes that are on 460, and they said, they're right in front of the Dollar General. And they said these are potholes that have been repaired before, but apparently the material came out with all this rain and whatever. I'm not surprised. But, and there was also one on 460 as you coming into Montgomery County from Roanoke County. After you cross the bridge, there's supposed to be one there too. But, and then the only other ones were a few on Allegheny Springs, that especially deep one there when you get near Forage, and then of course, Forage.
I've got those scheduled. After you mention the last one, I'll look at those myself.
All right, that's all we have. We appreciate everything you did.
Can I have one more time? I was thinking about Glade Road, just outside the Blacksburg Town Limits. Going up that hill, there's a lot of large stuff that's fallen, I guess, out of those woods on the right. There's a, looks like an old dead poplar that's about 10 inches in diameter that's laying in the ditch, almost in the road. So it probably needs to be cleaned up.
They might have pushed it out and then forgot to go back and get it.
I think that's exactly what happened.
Okay, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you all.
Deep cleaning, deep cleaning. That's good.
Oh, jeez.
That's going the extra mile. We appreciate it. Next item up is going to be public address. And I haven't done this in a while, so I thought I might read the instructions for public address. The Board of Supervisors allows citizens to present comments on issues deserving their attention during public address at each meeting. If you wish to speak, please observe the policy below regarding public address and the presentation of visuals. A public address sign-up sheet will be available outside the meeting room. Speakers are requested to provide their name, address, and phone number and list the subject matter on the sign-up sheet. And also, I will add to that, that's not required. If you didn't sign up, that's fine. Following the names on the sign-up sheet, other speakers will be allowed. Each speaker has four minutes, whether speaking as an individual or a representative. All comments must be directed to the chair and other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. Please begin by stating your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statements and/or comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in personal attacks, use profanity, or abusive language, or debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. Accepted etiquette is to not applaud or make loud responses. Yeah, we haven't read that in a long time, so it's good. We did not have anybody sign up, but as I just said, that doesn't stop anybody from coming forward, giving your name and address, and you would have four minutes. And I see somebody coming forward.
Hi, I'm Donna Christian. I live at 420 Powery Street in Christiansburg, Virginia. And I am to event the West Montgomery County Relay for Life this year. We are involved with the American Cancer Society, and I understand that the Montgomery County and Town of Christiansburg have a week that you guys designate to foster cancer awareness in October. And so I just wanted to speak briefly with you guys, and thank you for everything you do for the American Cancer Society. We've worked with the county and the Town of Christiansburg to do our event each year. Just appreciate you guys and ask that you be involved with us again this year. We look forward to that, and we look forward to having a Relay for Life in Christiansburg on July, I'm sorry, June 11th of 2021. Turn it over to Steve.
My name is Stephen Scott. I have a 1215 plant drive in Christiansburg. I'm totally with Donna for the Montgomery County Relay for Life. Mr. Chairman, board members. As a member of the American Cancer Society, our primary missions are cancer awareness and fundraising. Our fundraising efforts support cancer research and trials and the continued development of new drugs and treatment. In addition, we also provide more personal services, such as Hope Lodge, providing housing for families of cancer patients. Look Good, Feel Better, a program that provides makeup, wigs, and prosthetics for cancer sufferers. Road to Recovery, providing rides to and from treatment and appointments for cancer patients. We have all here been touched by cancer. And we thank you for this opportunity to share our vision of a cancer-free world. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do for our community. All right, is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one, I am going to go ahead and close the public address. Craig, while you're doing that, I'll ask you, is there any addendum?
We have no addendum.
Okay, well, I took care of that. All right. Next topic is items of consent. Is there a motion?
Same.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Bloodons?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Judge Casten?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
All right, next item is go into work session. Do we have a motion?
Same.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bloodons?
Aye.
Chair Judge Casten?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
All right, take her away.
I believe our Budget Manager Mark McGruder and Director of Finance Angie Hill are going to make a presentation to the board with the fiscal year 2021 revenue update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just get to the back, see what we got?
She knows this, what you're going to do. She knows this, what you're gonna do.
Good evening. Hey, tonight I'm going to give you a little update on our fiscal year twenty revenue. Uh, we, y'all had a presentation back in July where we went over some numbers. Um, some of those numbers changed a little bit. Um, so we'll talk about that. Actually, Angie and I are going to tag team this. So I'm going to do a few slides and she's going to come up and talk a little bit and then I'm going to finish it all. I want to go back. The last time I was in front of the board was in January, uh, which was ten months ago. And a lot has changed since that time.
I was going to say that was a happy time.
Yeah, things were much different.
Many, seems like many years ago now.
Um, but I, I want to go back to that and talk a little bit about what I was seeing at that time and some things that we talked about. And back then, if you remember, I was talking about how significant our growth pattern was, um, for the fiscal year twenty, uh, fiscal year. And we were seeing growth not only locally, but we also started to see ridiculous growth patterns at the state level. Stuff that we'd never seen before. I mean, I was getting numbers that were two years worth of growth in one year. Um, and that really is helping us, um, as we, as we move through this pandemic. So I want to talk about, you know, what our undesignated revenues did, um, during twenty. So if you remember in January, I said that we were going to have roughly three point six million dollars in excess revenue. Um, and that was based on, you know, pre-pandemic issues. What actually happened was at the end of fiscal year twenty, our actual collections exceeded the estimates by two point eight million. It was actually two million dollars of that three point six million that we actually collected. Um, and we were, we actually exceeded our estimates by two point two nine percent. As far as designated revenue collections, once we adjust for the, um, for CSA and locally administered road projects, we were slightly under the estimates by like, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. And we were within ninety-eight point seven five percent of the estimate. Again, um, very close to the estimates. When you take both the undesignated and designated revenues together, our actual collections were within one point nine three percent of the estimates. So what this chart shows is, is this is what I presented in January, what I thought we would be in excess by category. And you can see each individual category, real estate, personal property, public service, corporation, all the way down through sales tax and all of our other categories. So I estimated three point six million. We actually came in at just over two million dollars. However, I want to point out that if you look at the, uh, real estate number, we were in the hole nearly one point two million dollars. And that was because we waived penalty and interest on the June real estate payment. So had we not done that and we had received that revenue when we should have, assuming that we didn't waive penalty and interest, we actually would have committed three point four million dollars of the three point six that I had projected early on. And that was after the pandemic hit. So I think we would have hit three six had, you know, some things not happened as they did. But, um, overall, we did fairly well. And I'm going to point again back to that because that's going to help us in our current fiscal year. Because since we did not collect that revenue, it's actually going to help us get out of the hole in some of the revenue categories in which we are not going to make our estimates in the current year. Overall, considering the circumstances, we did very well, um, with where we could have been and what actually did happen. All right, at this point, I'm going to have Angie come up and talk about our general fund cash balance. And then I'll be right back.
So Mark's charts look a little bit different from yours here, but the ones I do look the same. The numbers change, but the format is pretty much the same. This sheet, um, is familiar to you. It just walks through our year-end cash balance of what our actual cash dollars were on hand for the general fund at the end of the year. And then we adjust it for items that we know are already set aside and we can spend. So we start the year, which this number is not audited yet, but we don't feel like it will change significantly. It's forty-eight point three million dollars of cash. And that is an increase from last year of about a million eight because we did collect more revenue than we spent during the year. The next box is, um, our cash flow reserve, which is the estimated amount we need for operations for cash flow. This chart looks a little bit different because it has updated colors to go with our branding. That's the PIO office because I surely couldn't figure that out, but thoroughly did in just a matter of seconds. So, um, this chart shows if we start twenty-four months ago and had no cash, then we start bringing in cash and spending money. This is how our cash balance fluctuates up and down. And that's how we determine what we think our cash flow reserve should be. And it was really cool to me when I looked at this compared to last year and I wanted to show you guys, but everybody thought I was just being a nerd. But the chart itself, the numbers are a little bit different, but the pattern is exactly the same as the previous year. So I felt like that was, it gives credibility to our methodology of how we're coming up with these numbers. Now, in the past few years, we've used twenty-two million dollars as our cash flow reserve and this year we're using twenty-four million dollars. That's because both last year and this year, the low point of cash was twenty-four to twenty-six million dollars. So we wanted to make sure that we have enough on hand, especially with the uncertainty that's going on right now. So that's why that's twenty-four million dollars. Now I'm going to back up to the page before again. The next box shows the amount of money that you guys have already appropriated for expenditures. It says through August, but really it's the current date. We appropriated purchase orders for the county and the schools. We've appropriated grant funds. We've re-appropriated some balances that are required to be used for specific items. We've re-appropriated the school carry forward and, uh, some other items that we had appropriated out of fund balance that are listed at the bottom of that. Then the fourth box over is our designated reserve amount. Most of those numbers change the same. There are a few of them that change from year to year based on the activity in the year. For example, um, the line of duty reserve, we're self-insured for line of duty. And so we have money in the budget to pay those expenses every year. And if we don't use all of that budgeted money, then we increase the reserve. Caregiver leave is the next item, which we left the same here, but then we, I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a minute. Animal shelter donations, that varies from year to year based on the activity of that animal shelter and how many donations they're able to raise during the year. Uh, conservation easements, that changes as well. That increases when we exceed our rollback taxes for real estate. So if we receive more rollback taxes, then we budget, we increase that conservation easement, uh, reserve to fund balance. The juvenile detention home reserve, that changes as well. We know that they're going to need to be capital repeaters there and they're budgeted. We budgeted them in our base budget and then we add to that so we don't have to come up with a huge amount of money all at once. So we add to that reserve from year to year. The EDA incentives is similar. We have, um, a certain amount budgeted for incentives each year. And if we don't spend all of the incentives, then we set that aside. And then if the EDA needs funding or more incentives are needed for any purpose during the year, we have that set aside as well. And then the technology reserves for equipment or other IT needs. Um, and again, that changes based on how that budget ends the year. So the IT department has excess expenditure capacity. At the end of the year, we increase that number. So if you get to the end of the, um, the last box on the chart, it's ten billion dollars. And last year, you can see, if you look at the bottom, the box right at under, the last box under the ten million dollar number. At this time last year, it was seven million dollars. But as I said earlier, we did, our cash number did go up because we collected more revenue. We were very conservative with our spending, expenditures at the end of the year during the pandemic. And also some of the, um, county purchase orders were lower this year, significantly lower than last year again because we were not spending more and covering as much money at that point. Some estimated or, um, proposed uses that could be used for the, with the ten million dollars include county care reports. We've not done anything with that yet and we estimate that at about a million dollars. Um, an estimate has been provided to you before for the renovation of the former sheriff's office of about two million dollars. And we've also spoken to you about increasing the reserve for paid caregiver leave of about a hundred thousand dollars for that reserve. If you guys have questions about this part, I'll stay there. Mark can come back and I can come back later.
Would you rather ask questions now or wait?
I got to finish it.
We'll do it at the end.
Yeah, we'll wait. We'll wait. Yeah.
I was trying to say wipe.
We have plenty of wipes.
I know, that's good, right?
No cutting corners.
We're starting to wipe the finish off stuff in the building. We've wiped down stuff so many times.
All right. All right. Let's talk about the, uh, state budget update. Um, so essentially what the, the governor did, um, in the approved state budget was he unallotted funds. Basically what that means is he basically cut the stuff out. So, um, those, uh, funds have been made permanent. So he basically just cut those things out of the budget and they've been permanently reduced. Excluding school funding, um, which we haven't received any updates on, um, the state revenue impacted accounting is mostly tied to, uh, constitutional offices. And so when we put the proposed budget together, we accounted for that in the adopted budget. So, um, there was largely no impact to our budget because we didn't put any money in for those things that we thought could possibly be cut. Um, as I said today, the, the schools have not received updated state revenue estimates. So we're not sure what the impact is, um, for them at this point. So the, the big question is how are we doing in the current year? And, um, I, I want to say first off, before I start getting into these numbers, that it is early days and, um, where we sit, where we are into the first quarter. But as a general rule, I don't really have any concept of how good or bad things are going to be until December. And the reason for that is, uh, we produced the personal property book in September. And then between September and December, we have supplements and abatements that change, either add to or take away from that book. And then as I get closer to December, we start getting the actual collections in and then I can compare those actual collections to the book. And if people are paying what is on the book, then I know that there's, the numbers are legitimate. So, um, there's a lot of swing between September and December. So I'm going to say that upfront because these numbers will change between now and then. Um, I've never presented, um, revenue numbers this early before in the line. And the reason for that is the line share of our revenue is picked up in December and that's when I have a better picture of what's going on. But having said that, for the first quarter, our undesignated revenue collections are looking pretty good. Um, they're trending close to the estimates and for certain areas, we're actually going to be above the estimates. However, on the other hand, uh, based on the values that have been put forth on the personal property book, um, collections in certain categories are estimated to be less than the budgeted revenues. And we sort of knew that would happen after this pandemic hit. In other words, when I put the revenue projection together, we had no idea what the impact was going to be, you know, from March on. Um, but we knew, or at least I knew, that one of the biggest categories that was going to be affected was going to be motor vehicles. Because as soon as things slowed down, people did not go out and buy a car. And that makes sense. You're not going to go out and buy a car if you're worried about your job. And so we saw a major slowdown in motor vehicle sales from about March on into the summer. So I, I expected that number to be low and I'll show you what, what those numbers look like right now. Again, as I said before, there's going to be changes to the personal property book between now and December. So I'll have a better idea of what things are looking like as we get closer to the end of the calendar year. And as I said earlier, um, waiving the penalty and interest until September actually helped us a lot in the current year because some of the estimated shortfalls that I'm seeing are going to be shored up, so to speak, and offset, uh, based on this revenue that we're getting from, um, the real estate that was actually due last year, but is coming in now. Um, so that's going to help us in the current year. And while our revenue collections are positive to date, we could see reductions in personal property valuation. And these projected shortfalls that I'm starting to see are going to be present when I present the fiscal year twenty-two revenue projection. So, um, that's something that I'm going to be evaluating between now and the end of the year to get an idea of where I think things are going to be. Um, we will continue to refine our estimates until, um, we get our actual collections in and I'll have a better idea of where we sit. You know, when I present normally, which is in January, um, of, of the next year. Um, so I, I'm just saying that on the front end so that you realize that there will be shortfalls in fiscal year twenty-two based on things that are happening right now. All right. So these are what I think the revenue estimates are going to look like after three months' worth of collections. And as you can see, um, the big shortfall is in, um, our personal property motor vehicles category, which you see right there is nearly a half a million dollars in the hole. Um, that's the, the, the major issue that I, and I expected that when I started to see that we were not selling, and people were not buying as many vehicles, um, after the pandemic hit. Um, but overall, things really don't look that bad. I've got some positive numbers in real estate that are helping to offset some of that. So the hole that I see in general property taxes in the current year is around two hundred thousand dollars. I want to point out the delinquent property tax number. You can see on this chart here that I'm plus one million dollars. Okay, that one million dollars is because of the one point two million dollars in excess revenue from the real estate payment that was due back in June. So we're picking it up as a delinquency, even though it wasn't considered a delinquency. It's not a current property, uh, tax revenue as far as my estimates are concerned. So it's being shown in a, as a delinquent property tax number, even though there was no penalty or interest on that. You also see the penalty and interest numbers are down because we weren't charging those numbers during that same time period. Overall, when we put all the collections together, you see I'm, right now, I'm plus eight hundred thousand dollars on our estimate. So I feel good because the, the, the monies that we should have received last year on the real estate payment are helping offset these shortfalls. And I think we're going to make it through the fiscal year on a positive number. Um, the one thing I want to point out, um, is our, our local sales and use tax. That number is super surprising to me because I was expecting it to be really, really in the hole. And right now, I'm basically on the number after three months. We've actually collected more in the first three months of this fiscal year than we did the first three months of last fiscal year. And I'm trending to the target, but it's early days. So, um, again, that number could change dramatically. If people all of a sudden stop spending or things, patterns change. But total revenue picture looks pretty good. It looks like I'm going to be plus eight hundred thousand the way things look. Again, that's with one point two million in real estate. If we didn't have that one point two million in real estate, I'd be in the hole around four hundred thousand dollars. So, um, like I said, uh, waiving the penalty and interest is helping us. Uh, looking forward, we didn't talk about this in this presentation too much, but there will be some shortfalls. Um, you know, our normal growth patterns are around two million, two and a half million a year. Um, I don't see us having that type of year with some of the issues that I see in, in our current year. Uh, I think there would be growth. I just don't think it's going to be as, as much as we've experienced in the past. All right. That's a lot of information that I presented tonight. Um, so I'll be glad to entertain any questions you have about either our fiscal year twenty numbers or twenty-one's numbers.
All right. Now, let's, uh, go around the room. We'll go in reverse order. Supervisor Blavins, do you have any questions?
So it looks like you're still pretty, we're, we're pretty good shape, but this is just the first quarter.
That's right. Um, yeah, and, and again, this is- Again, this is based on, the line share of this revenue is based on the personal property book, which I know there's going to be some changes to. But, you know, I've been, this is my 17th year presenting revenue numbers to the board and I feel good about where we're sitting considering everything that's going on. I mean, a lot of counties would be envious of where we're sitting from a revenue standpoint, given where we're sitting.
That's very good. Can you explain to me again, just to make sure I understand, how, because they, we waived the penalties and the money is coming in now, how is that increase, wasn't it still accounted for at the time it was due?
No, we operate on a cash basis and so we recognize revenue when it's actually received. When you waive the penalty and interest, people chose not to pay because they could pay all the way up through September. So any payment we received after June 30th would show up on our books in fiscal year 21, even though the money was technically due back in fiscal year 20. So I'm receiving the revenue now and booking it now and it's on our books on a cash basis now.
And you said, you already said that, of course, it's early, that local sales and use tax is right on budget, right where you estimated, but that could change. We're still just in the first?
Yeah, we're in the first three months and we're actually two months behind on when we receive those payments. So like when I receive a payment now, it's actually from two months ago. And so, you know, I watch these throughout the year and, but I don't really do the normal projection until I have about six months' worth of data. And right now, I've got three months' worth of data, two of which is in a prior period. Okay? So like I said, it's early days, but you know, from everything that I'm seeing, I feel pretty good. Normally, you know, I have this, this conversation that we're having right now. I have this every year at this time, but I don't really have it with anybody but myself. And I'm watching how things go and then as December rolls around, we refine things and they get, you know. So I have an idea, in my opinion, this is kind of a glimpse of what's going on, but a lot can change between now and December.
And just another comment, very conservative because we, and we have some, the money because we haven't spent a lot of money, being very conservative. Have there been shortfalls of things that we need that we've just put off that in the future, we're going to have to pay for?
Well, I mean, I think that every year, there's a lot of things that we should pay for or should do and we choose not to do them for a variety of reasons. I think that we made a concerted effort this year because of the pandemic, not knowing what was going to happen, to be more conservative than normal. But there's certainly a lot of needs out there that need to be addressed and it's kind of one of those things where, you know, eventually we're going to have to address those needs.
And any idea at all on what the state or when the state may say something about the school budget?
I have no idea. I had contacted the schools a few weeks ago to see if they had gotten a calculation tool to help them with their numbers and they hadn't received anything yet. So, you know, I think it's a waiting game to see how things roll out for them, but I don't have any information on that.
Okay. Well, thank you. You guys are experts. You're just right on target. So we do appreciate, we appreciate all the departments being very conservative. Wish we all had that crystal ball that we could see what the future is, but we need to continue to be conservative in that we can operate and we're very blessed to be. Thank you for the staff and all your work to keep us in such a good shape that we are now. Thank you.
Supervisor King.
I don't have no questions right now, but you know, as usual, I may call you once I get through this. But I do want to tell you how much I appreciate everybody and being conservative on everything and, you know, it makes the county strong when we all work together and I do appreciate that.
Supervisor Demonts.
Just wanted to make sure I understood one of the points that you made. The governor unallotted funds in the approved state budget and then I heard that those were largely unallotted from constitutional offices. Was that correct?
No, what I was trying to say there was that the things that were affected on the county side were items that are tied back to the constitutional offices, but we accounted for that in the budget. So in other words, they had talked about putting raises in and then they pulled them back. And so when we presented the budget, I didn't put those extra revenues in there because I didn't really think that they were going to happen. And so we kind of accounted for that stuff before it actually went down. So I didn't have to worry about cutting it back out when it didn't happen.
Thank you. I kind of, I wasn't sure that that's what I heard and I didn't think it sounded correct. And then as always, I know that all of us probably have people approach us in public and say, what's going to happen, what's going to happen, what's going to happen? And so I know this is outside of the normal schedule for you guys to be here, but it's very appreciated because it kind of gives us the answer to what's going to happen. I think I personally have felt like things are going to be fairly okay, but this presentation tonight definitely leads me to be a little bit more optimistic. And thank you both as always for how awesome you both are, how dedicated you both are for all the hard work that you put into everything that you do every day. It's very appreciated. You guys do a great job. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
And just think, if you come here now and you talk to us, you don't want to talk to yourself.
He still talks to himself.
I really appreciate, I don't have any questions. Mr. Loveens asked a lot of good questions that I had. But I appreciate you coming because a lot of people I talk to and I know a lot of people other people I talk to, there's a big question mark as to how are we going to be ever since like April or May, you know, and they're thinking about money and how's the county going to be. So I really appreciate it. Thanks for doing such a great job.
Certified Supervisor Bitts.
I don't know how I'm certified, but I appreciate, well, I'm excited actually because this is better than I thought it was going to be. So I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that it continues to be. But on the school issue, did I dream this or did I read in the Rona Times where money was coming from the state and they listed the counties and how much they were going to receive?
Additional CARES Act money?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
They provided an additional 1.7 million in CARES Act money.
Yeah, and so they can qualify that to use the same as the other, if they want, need their PPE and all of that kind of stuff. Okay. Yeah, I know I read it somewhere and it was sticking in my brain, so.
The money that they just got?
Yes.
Is, okay, so there's the CARES Act and then there are different kinds of funds within the CARES Act and the schools had some money, the money that they got in the beginning could be used for different things than we can use our CARES money for and they also had longer to spend it, a longer period of time. I think it's November 22 maybe. So this amount that they just received, it falls this exact CARES money that we have temporarily fund. So it has to be spent by the end of December and it can only be spent for COVID-related things that are spelled out in that. So it's a little bit different than the other money they already received, but it's exactly like the money that we got.
Okay, that makes sense. And then this is, I'll just throw this out, but I don't know if anyone knows. Did they ever get all their students hooked up to the internet?
I don't know.
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, because that, you can use that money as long as you get it spent, you can use it for internet.
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Bone.
I have a number of questions. I'll try and keep Mr. Magruder's questions first and then Ms. Hills next. So on page three, the difference, the negative 1.2 million dollars in real estate because it carried over.
Right, that was the, you know, because people didn't, they waived or took the opportunity to utilize the board waiving that, they didn't make their full real estate payments when they normally would have.
So we usually collect, I don't want to say hundreds of millions of dollars, maybe tens of millions of dollars in real estate taxes typically at that time?
Real estate is roughly around 72 million.
Yeah, per year, so then it's half?
Yeah, it's about, yeah, it's more in the 36 million dollar range.
Okay, so you gave us, you gave us a 3.4 million and then you talk about the 1.2 million. I clearly understand the 1.2 million, but I thought you said something about 3.4 million.
Right, in other words, what I'm saying here is, let me go back to that chart. All right, so let's imagine that instead of us not receiving the 1.1 million, we, the people would pay when they should have and there wasn't, we didn't waive it, then that 2 million 79 would have been 3.4 million.
What's two? Oh, okay.
You see what I'm saying? Instead of that being negative, it would zero itself out and then I would have that 1.1 on top of that. So we would have been, you know, if, if the pandemic hadn't occurred and people had paid when they normally would have, we would have come in at 3.4 of the 3.6 that I thought we were going to have when I made the projection back in January.
On slide eight, I made a note. So if we hadn't carried over 2 point, or 3.4 million or 2 million dollars, if I'm saying that correctly?
We didn't carry anything over, but that's just representing how much revenue we received in addition to the estimate last year.
Okay.
Next one.
I guess my question is, I'd like to understand a little bit about the shortfalls that you would have expected if we had collected the penalties and interest on time?
If we had collected the penalties and interest on time, I would have had that 3.4 last year in '20 and I wouldn't have the 1.2 showing up in the current year. Okay, so if we go back to my chart here on the projection here, I have 1.2 million dollars that I'm collecting in that delinquent property line. But you see, you see there it's 3.195247. You see that? On the delinquent properties, our estimated actual, 3.195247. That number has 1.2 million dollars in it that was due last year. So if I didn't get that number, then I would be
Negative.
I would be in the hole
Right.
$300,000 roughly in that line. And so if we go to the end of my chart, I'm plus 800,000 or almost 900,000.
Right.
But 1.2 million of that is because of the real estate that I picked up from last year. So if that hadn't occurred, I would have received the money last year, but I would have a hole of roughly 300,000 to 400,000.
I got it. Do you remember, because you've been around for a while, you said however many years?
17.
And, you know, with the Great Recession, the car sales were decimated also. How quickly those car sales actually came back?
Well, back during that time period, we actually did several things. One, we changed the valuation structure. So at that time, we were, we were on clean loan value, I think, and we went to clean trade. And so in the year that we had, we had a major drop in motor vehicle valuation, I think it was in 2009. And so that year, in order to make up the revenue shortfall, we changed our value structure from clean loan to clean trade, which gave us the money back that we lost.
Okay.
So
But you still know what was purchased and
Yeah, I mean, you know, you know, motor vehicles can be up and down. You know, we had a banner year last year, I mean, crazy growth. This year's numbers were not as high, but considering where we are right now, they were pretty good. I think the number was around 10 million in growth, which is pretty good considering the year that we're in. But as far as recovery, a lot of that has to do with a huge amount of economic factors. 2009, we had major issues. I can remember dealerships were not selling stuff for an extended period of time and they were running major rebates at the time. And then, you know, when things started to pick up, then, you know, our motor vehicle valuations came along with it.
So it can be quite a while.
Yeah, you know, I would say that, you know, depending upon how things go, you could see, you know, two, three years before things come back. I do remember that when the sales tax number hit, I think we went almost four years before I came back to the number that I had in 2008 when we peaked. So there was a four-year window which I collected less revenue than I had when we peaked in 2008. So, you know, it, a lot of it depends on, on things that, you know, we don't necessarily control here. And a lot of it has to do with consumer sentiment.
When you were talking on slide 10, you were talking generally, we usually have revenue growth of 2, 2.5 million per year, if I remember what you said. And you said that you expect growth, but not nearly that. Are you pretty confident that it's not going to be negative?
At this point, I don't think it's going to be negative.
At this point, if you had to take a wild guess, what kind of range would, would you kind of, would it be over a half a million dollars? You know, one thing is positive with a dollar, right? You got that, you know, but we're used to 2, 2.5. Is it going to be 1? You know, I'm not, I'm not going to pin you on that by any means.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a lot of factors involved here. And what I can tell you is that I'm going to expect growth. I would say that we would be anywhere from a half a million to a million and a half, depending upon how things roll out. We had a few things that happened with real estate. We sold the technology manufacturing building and that added some value that I didn't anticipate because we didn't know we were going to sell that at the time that I was making the projection. So that coupled with some other areas of growth are, we're going to see, see growth. The one thing that we are going to see is a reduction in our interest earnings and I don't know what that number is going to look like yet, but, you know, the number that is in the budget right now, we are not going to be able to maintain because of where interest rates are. So if I were a betting person, I would put me somewhere between a half million and a million and a half. And that assumes that, you know, things don't collapse between now and the end of the year, particularly with sales tax, because that's really going to be my wild card. I have an idea of what's happening with motor vehicles because we have a value in the book. But when people decide to change their behavior, particularly, you know, around Christmas time, I don't know what, we get a huge influx of money, you know, sometime in February, March timeframe, based on the December sales. That's really when I'm going to have that moment where I'm like, this is where we're sitting.
I get it. And then we have a law firm still working on our delinquent property tax collection. Does that show up in any of your numbers, like what they've collected versus what you had in your budget?
Yeah, so I mean, if you look at the numbers, you know, I had 2.2 million as an estimate for delinquent property taxes.
Okay.
Right now, I'm thinking that number is going to be around 2 million and then I got the 1.1 that's coming in from the real estate. So I see that number a little lower than where we thought we were going to be and part of that has to do with the pandemic and people's ability to pay. And so, you know, it's a wild card too, you know. People, if they have the ability to pay, they will pay if they put pressure on them. But at the same time, if people don't have the ability to pay, you're not going to be able to get it.
And I can see that, you know, when we put this, when we asked this law firm to, to work for us, the economy was a totally different picture where, you know, going after people to pay their delinquent taxes is a little bit more reasonable than in a pandemic or, you know, recession like we're in right now. So that's all I have for you. I have a couple of questions for Ms. Hill. And these aren't necessarily only for you, but I wrote them on your slide, so. Yeah. Okay, you mentioned that the first red number on your cash balance slide used to be 22 million, now it's 24. I understand because you can look at the next slide and you see back in September of 18, the lowest was 2422. I understand because you can look at the next slide and you see back in September of 18, the lowest was 2422. But I'm reading this, this slide as we've got 10 million over here plus the 24.
Well, we can't spend the 24 because if we spend the 24, we know that we collect real estate taxes twice a year. There will, there will be some months when we're in the hole.
Right.
It's hard to see those dates, but so September, October, April, we'll be in the hole. If we spend all that money, we'll have to go to the bank and borrow money from people.
I'm not, I, I, I agree what a reserve is. It's for cash flow purposes.
Exactly. But that is true. The total cash that we have is the very first number.
Right, but I'm taking out what we have in, what, what these middle two, which are, we've set aside.
Yes, that's right.
They're reserved for specific purposes. And the 24 million obviously is for a specific purpose too. Then we've got this 10 million over here that isn't in reserves.
Correct.
But we're not going to spend that either because we don't know what's going to happen, so I get that. But do you?
That 10 million dollars is available though, as, as they've shown underneath in the box. That 10 million can be allocated for some future capital or, as mentioned earlier, carry forwards, which we haven't asked county departments if there's any interest in that. Also know there's been some conversation about perhaps some pay supplements and whatnot, that money could be used for that. So that it, some of that money probably most likely will be used.
Okay.
And one thing I would like to add real quick, but I didn't go over before in the first box on the bottom, it's about our financial health. And the bond rating agencies are, the next time we go out, they're really going to look at how we come through this, so if we spend all of that.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Right.
Believe me.
It wouldn't look good.
Right.
But because we are doing well, lovers, making sure that our cash flow reserve is sufficient and we are setting aside some money just in case some other thing happens or like Mark said, things go downward again, we'll be in a good position.
So talking about the cash flow on your next chart, you know, you don't have 2008, 2009 on this chart because, I mean, gosh, it would be a high chart, right?
Yes.
But if you think about the downturn back in that period, how significant, maybe percentage wise, you know, you can clearly see in this chart, it's trending like this.
Yes. That's how it looks every year. That was my nerd talk. It looks like that every year. And I, I do like that because it shows that that's a valid way to look at things because it does recur and it shows us how much money are we going to need over a 24-month period? What is the amount that we're going to have to have? And as our budget has grown so much since 2008, the numbers have changed a whole lot and they've gotten bigger because as our budget gets bigger, obviously our cash flow needs are bigger. But the pattern was still the same in those years.
But did it drop in nine and 10? Because, you know, we didn't feel it in eight. It's sort of like, we didn't feel it in 20.
Right.
Because, you know, everything was in motion and it was like the last quarter, right?
Right.
But in nine and 10 is when?
The trend was similar because we were very conservative in our expenditures. Then we raised a whole lot of positions. We did not add any new initiatives. We were very, very conservative in our expenditure. So the trend was not significantly different.
Okay.
Because I've been here longer than you are.
I was going to say, I mean, more than 17, I think. I particularly love the fact that you have the increased reserve paid for caregiver leave dollar amount, you know, to take, to follow through with what Supervisor King and the county has done for the elder care.
Right.
So I think that's exciting. The other thing is, I just want to make sure there's no CARES Act money in here.
That is correct. It did not include CARES Act.
And and then I understand that when the pandemic hit, we ratcheted back and just tried to say what was the fundamental numbers that we really need to keep. I get that. So 2022, fiscal year 2022 is going to come up. But Mr. McGruder says that we'll probably have some growth. So would, would a budget kind of look very similar with a tiny bit of growth for 2022? Typically, a recommended budget?
I have no idea. Because I don't know all the other factors that Mark talked about. If the growth came through throughout this year, I think we would still be conservative unless we feel more comfortable in that place based on the state of the world.
That's what I was going to add. The big, the big unknown right now is whether we have resurgence of the pandemic through the, through the winter months and what effect that may have on the economy. That's, that's what we've got to watch very carefully because if we go into the winter months and begin to have some shutdowns or, or closings again, that's going to significantly affect our outlook for fiscal year 2022.
And but not so much for 2020, the one, the fiscal year we're in right now?
Right.
Okay.
Unless sales tax goes off the charts like or falls down on our light marks.
And then two more. Broadband. Have we put any money aside for broadband anywhere?
Not yet.
Is there a line item for broadband in our budget somewhere?
No, ma'am. One of the things we can talk about is of that 10, 3, 38, 197. We've mentioned on several occasions if the board wants to allocate some seed money or whatnot for, as we move forward with some of these matching grant programs and whatnot. That's where you could do that from very easily.
So what's the difference between that 10, 3 number and the 800,000 dollar number? We feel comfortable spending the 800,000 dollars or, you know, I guess when we were talking about raises, is that the?
We have, the carry forward fund, we have some money to carry forward funds total or 10 million, 338, 197. Some of that money is in contingencies that's in the current year budget now. Say, you know, there's some money set aside there for 3% raises that's in the current year budget. There's also a million 550,000 set aside for schools. And I think one thing you're hearing from this presentation tonight as well is, at least from a staff perspective, I think right now we're comfortable with the board considering releasing some of that out of special contingencies if that's the board's desire to do so.
And that is in, excuse me, special contingencies. It's not in the 10, 3. That's one-time money that's just left over, but the ongoing budget, like Craig said, in special contingencies, we set aside money for the raise. We did not appropriate it for a raise, but it is in the ongoing budget. So if things keep going okay, it will be in there, but this 10 million is one-time.
I got you. Lastly, could you tell me the difference between being conservative, fiscally conservative and fiscally responsible?
Well, in my opinion, they're the same.
Okay. I appreciate that.
They are honestly the same. We're trying to be responsible and right now that means we have to be conservative. There are times we can be responsible and know that things are going well and we know what the property book is and we know that we have growth that we didn't anticipate or we know that a great industry is coming here or some company is going to come and we're going to get a huge amount of tax dollar from that. And then we wouldn't have to be as conservative, but we would still be responsible. But right now I think they're the same.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. You guys are awesome rock stars.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
If I can tack one thing on to that, Mr. Chair two, because we're fiscally responsible and fiscally conservative, that's one reason our bond ratings are as strong as they are. And that's something that is the bedrock, the, the front row here, all of us always work on is we, we are definitely fiscally responsible, but when the rating agencies take a look, they, they feel very strongly about Montgomery County and the way the funds are managed. So thank you for that.
Before I close it out, anybody else have any follow-up questions? Okay, I, I know Supervisor Levens was just joking about the crystal ball, Mark, but I, I know for a fact you do have one. Because a couple of years ago, you made some predictions that I, I thought, wow, you're spot on. But my only question that I have is, other than a resurgence of the pandemic, which would affect all of us, is there anything that you see that is really going to be a negative effect on us that would come from the General Assembly? Is there anything that they are considering that you know of that could kind of kick us back a couple of steps? May not wipe us out, but could put a, a big burden on the county?
There's, there's one issue that, that has piqued my interest a little bit. And, and that is the body camera issue. And I don't know the implications and Marty may have to weigh in on it, but I think there was some legislation that was put out there that was going to mandate that all police departments have body cameras. And if you remember, we had to add a, a position in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office to help with reviewing the footage and all that. So that potentially could be an issue. If the two towns, which my understanding is the two towns do not currently have body cameras deployed. If they would have them, that could add a significant number of body cameras, which then could, you know, kind of force our hand into adding positions to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. I'm not exactly sure how that would work, but that could be a potential issue that, that would have a negative implication on us. That's the only thing that I can think of off the top of my head that I've looked at that has me a little bit concerned just because, you know, it's sort of a, an unfunded mandate. I'm going to answer a different question for you. As far as the economy is concerned, I will say that there are a few things structurally that concern me going forward. And one of those is inflation and the possible devaluation of currency. Those two things could affect the broader economy, which could ultimately affect us. Those, you know, if you ask me, you know, what, what keeps me awake at night, those, those two things right there are what concern me long-term. We don't really have any way to control that. The only thing we can do is respond to it when and if it happens. But when the federal government floods the economy with money, the first thing that happens is inflation. So that's a real possibility. And that's something that we may have to deal with sooner rather than later.
Okay, I knew there was going to be a bright spot in this whole thing.
Can I ask another follow-up question?
Yes, go ahead.
So there wasn't inflation, even though many of us thought there would be inflation after the Great Recession. What is different this time that makes you think that?
I think that, that, well, there's several things that are going on in the economy that, that can create that. When, when you flood the economy with money, well, first off, the issues that plagued the economy back during the Great Recession are not the same issues that plague the economy now or potentially could plague the economy. The, the bigger issue I see is, you know, we already have issued, you know, a huge sort of bailout package to get the economy restarted and there's, my concern is we're going to do another one of those. And when you issue all this money, you know, the debt has to be paid from somewhere. And at some point, the, you know, the, the, the US dollar is the reserve currency. And so at some point, if some of these people that are buying that dollar choose not to do that anymore, then you're going to have those fractures. And I don't know that it will happen, but if you keep flooding the economy with money, it could happen. So, you know, I don't, I don't have the crystal ball that, you know.
You do have it.
But I know enough about the economy to be concerned.
The flooding of the economy is of different form now than what it was because they were certainly flooding the economy back in the Great Recession.
They were, they were, yeah.
But it's just uncharted territory. We're in a different place. The debt's much bigger, blah, 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 right?
Right, exactly.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, any other follow-ups? Seeing none, we thank you again, both of you. Brilliant job.
All right, thank you.
I know that your last 17 years, Mark, probably the best years of your life, I'm sure. And we hope you have many more.
I did, I did learn something. Both of them admitted they talk to themselves a lot tonight, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to follow up on that a little bit.
All right, well, next item is come out of work session. Is there a motion to come out of work session?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary?
Ms. Bennett?
Aye.
Ms. Bays?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair, if you can.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
All right, we are out of work session and I'm getting the signal to maybe take us a little quick break. So we are going to take a five-minute break. Be back in here at 20 till.
And then 30.
That's just crazy. Well, next item is come out of work session. Is there a motion to come out of work session?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary.
Ms. Bennet.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blavens.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Bennet.
Aye.
Chair Fitchakowski.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item, addition to the rural addition priority list, gobblers nod. Feel like I'm in a movie some.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blavens.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Bennet.
Aye.
Chair Fitchakowski.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2020. And for those of us wearing something close to pink, we get extra credit.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
One thing, you know, when it comes to breast cancer, a lot of people look at it as a woman's thing, but it's my understanding that one in 883 men will get breast cancer. One in eight women will get some type of breast cancer. And it's a serious thing.
Absolutely.
I mean, I know some of my family members has had it. And, you know, it don't discriminate against nobody. And I would like to see us promote this a little more as we are now.
I'd like to thank the county for this resolution and also for participating with the flocking of the flamingo frenzy in the town of Christiansburg, too. I think it's just a great way for us to show support and thank the Relay for Life for folks because it does affect everyone. And we can flock your house too, Todd, and start that fundraiser campaign. So that's one way we can help.
There you go.
I'd also like to make a comment as a breast cancer survivor. I have a large family. I'm the youngest of five. Both of my parents had at least five children, siblings and so on. I was the absolute first person in any of my family to get breast cancer. Who would have thought that I'd be the lucky one? So get your mammograms, ladies, and do it regularly.
Any other comments? Yeah, I have a sister that had it and she was very fortunate to come through it. So it touches a lot of lives and no doubt about it. No doubt about it. All right. Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blavens.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Bennet.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Chair Fitchakowski.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
All right. Now we come to Marty's favorite part of the meeting, reports. And do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not.
Okay. That was quick. Craig, you have anything to report for county administration?
I always say, you know, we need to reverse it because I'm the one that always talks and he always says no report. But I only have one thing that I want to mention tonight and is so many of us are looking forward to 2020 being over and moving on to a much better 2021. We only have four board meetings left for calendar year 2020. That didn't occur to me till earlier today. So we have October 26th, we have two meetings in November, and then we only have one meeting in December is our custom. So if there are any items or issues that you want to make sure that the board addresses before the end of the calendar year, if you'll mention that to me or Vicky, we'll make sure when we do an agenda review with the chair and vice chair, they're aware of that because time is moving quickly. So just keep that in mind. And it was nice, Ms. Blevins, we, the Government Center was flocked last week with flamingos, you know. I don't know how many of you know that the Commissioner of the Revenue, that's her favorite bird. So we were watching during the day to make sure she didn't walk out and steal any of them. But we had a nice turnout for a picture. Appreciate Jennifer coordinating that. And as one whose mom is a double breast cancer survivor, it impacts many, many people. Yes, it does. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and go run through our supervisor list, but I thought tonight I would do a little bit differently since Vice Chair Bone has an issue she wanted to bring up. We'll go ahead and start with her.
Actually, I am not going to bring it up after all. Mr. McMahon, our county attorney, said that it practically moot at this point because of everything that happened last week. So initially I was thinking that we certainly would do what Roanoke County did and sent a letter to DQ and other organizations, but it's not necessary at this time. But I will continue.
Yeah, keep it. Keep it going.
Okay. I do want to thank everyone for your support during my mother's passing. It's been really hard, but I'm incredibly grateful that I was able to see her on her last living day. And your outpouring and generosity and kindness of words and comfort were very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Blevins.
No report. Just wanted to extend congratulations to Montgomery County Public School Systems on their groundbreaking ceremonies for the renovations at Christiansburg Elementary and Primary School. And just wanted to, a huge shout out to the teachers that are working so hard and trying so hard with love and dedication for school systems. And then one more shout out, and this is in your area, Mr. Chair Fitchakowski, to Resource Officer Deputy Underwood and the Eastern Montgomery High School YOVOSO. They won their speaking, the YOVOSO Saving Lives and Speaking Out Award. And that is, YOVOSO served on the advisory committee for that. And that, of course, is promoting teen driving safety. And wanted to do, just a shout out to Ms. Deputy Underwood for her great dedication. I've worked for many years and she is truly dedicated in traffic safety and the sheriff's office for providing her as a resource officer to Eastern Montgomery High School. So we want to send congratulations to her.
Thank you. Good job. Supervisor King.
Don't have no report. I'd just like to thank the county employees and Sheriff's Department for all their hard work during these last few months. I know you work hard all the time, but it's been challenging for y'all. And I do want you to know that I do think about y'all all the time and I do give you prayers and I appreciate everything that y'all do. And one more thing, I'd like to appreciate the Montgomery County School bus drivers. I know they got long hours now. I mean, bless their heart, they started something for part time, now they're full time. But I do want you to know that I have talked to parents and all and I do appreciate everything that y'all do.
Thank you. Supervisor Biggs.
Sort of following with Supervisor King, emergency services evidently really had a couple of really busy days and things go to law enforcement, emergency services and everyone for all they do. Again, you know, I can reflect back to how many times we've talked about our people being called out to 81. And when they're called out to 81, you know, the rest of us have to depend on coverage. And so thank you for all you do. Also, I wanted to thank the board for your support in my recovery from my hip replacement by letting me participate by Zoom. I enjoyed it, but this is much better being here in person. And I wanted to also encourage you, if you want, I know Sarah and April have looked at this certification process. Anyone that wants to talk to me about it, I found it to be well worthwhile. It is a lot of, there is a lot of effort and you have to be committed to doing it, but it really did help me and I really appreciate the fact that this was brought tonight. I didn't know it was going to be tonight, so thank you. Another thing is I wanted to give you a positive report about the airport. We had a meeting today. Our new airport director, Keith Holt, has been working really hard on customer service. And so he's come up with a lot of different things and a lot of different ideas to address that. He also has enlisted the help of the ROTC cadets from Virginia Tech and they're volunteering in various ways to help out at the airport. So I thought you'd like to know that. And the Airport Authority got a very good audit, clean audit report from the same auditors that we use. So things are really moving well with the airport. And that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor DeMoss.
Well, just a couple of things really. First, congratulations to Supervisor Biggs for your certification. That is awesome. I began the process of becoming a certified supervisor. I am not a good Zoom student, we'll say. So I would like to re-investigate that once things normalize and we're able to do those things in person, just because it's a learning, I guess it's a learning platform that does not work very well for me. Also, welcome back. We're very happy that you're back in the room with us. And then I wanted to point out, and I very intentionally wore my favorite accessory, my I voted today sticker, and just wanted to, I think probably most of the people here have already voted, but for anybody that's listening at home, wanted to make sure to remind people that we do have the extra voting sites open for live in-person voting. It was super easy. I was in and out within probably about three minutes and that was making sure I completely filled out my bubbles thoroughly. So it's very quick, very easy, and everybody there was very friendly. So if you want to have an option to vote in person, definitely go to the mall side or come here to the Government Center and vote there. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
Just one thing, that's several. If you haven't been down Price's Fork Road lately, it looks like a construction toy box got dumped upside down because there's construction on both sides of the road everywhere. Shaw Development has broken ground, so has Schieler, not Schieler, Snyder and Associates, you get that minute, and of course, the North Star Church. So it's very busy through there. That's all I have.
Well, all that housing construction is probably going to make Mark happy. Probably smiling somewhere right now. I also would like to welcome back Supervisor Biggs. Good to have you back and congratulations on your accomplishment. That's very noble. I didn't know that Supervisor DeMoss was a dropout. That's all right. I haven't even tried to do it yet, so I can't talk. But the, some of the things that I know several of us have discussed with each other is that during this pandemic, it seems like domestic assaults are out. And I definitely want to thank our sheriff's office and our local police for all they do in that. You know, as a retired police officer, when you go into a situation where people are fighting and you've got to get in the middle of it, kind of hard to protect yourself from COVID-19 just a little bit. So these people are putting themselves in harm's way every time they respond to a call like that, on top of all the other dangers that come with the job. But I definitely want to give them my appreciation and I'm sure all of us do. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.